Scott, we're still waiting for some of the applicant folk.
Gotcha. I see Mark Sanderson's here.
See, Mr. First is here.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Mark, how are you?
Good, thank you.
How are you? Really?
John First, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Dave.
Hey, John, how are you?
I'm doing fine.
Are we waiting for anybody on your team?
Um, let me just scroll down, but I think I think most everybody's here, but hold on one second.
Uh, I don't see, um...
My Patty, um, Andy, it's Andy Willingham on. I don't see Andy.
I see Andy Willingham's on. I'm looking for traffic on your end.
Ken.
I don't see Ken.
Yeah, I don't see Ken unless Ken called in, but...
Well, those are still unmuted, so if he is there, he could speak up.
So, Ken, Ken is here in my office. We're having a little, some issues with, with wifi, but we're good. Ken, Ken's here.
Oh, good.
All right. So he's physically present in your office? Yeah, he was on his way down to another meeting, so... Okay, great. All right, so I, I think that's everyone, Dave.
Um, Scott, it's, it's, I think you're all set. You've got, um, the planning board who's attending, and I think you've got the town board in attendance in full.
I think what I'm looking for is Charlie Long and, um, Lambros. Are they on?
Lambros is on. I do not see Charlie.
I know he was interested in doing this. He was, he'd mentioned he was coming on today, so... But, um, oh, I'll tell you what, we can start and he can jump in. How's that?
Lovely.
So, first I want to thank everybody for attending this tonight. Um, yeah, Charlie said he's trying to come in. He just texted me. So, I want to thank everybody for paying, um, the special, um, time to come to, uh, to do this joint board meeting tonight, um, to see the presentation of the villages. And, um, there, there are two reasons why we're here. Um, and it's to discuss the point of SEACER where we're at, at this time, and two, to catch both boards up on the, um, on the, on the project and see what it is they're presenting, um, you know, at this point, because actually the town board, they're very cognizant of what's happening, but I think they could see where we've gotten to at this, uh, stage of the presentation and, and we can go from there. I said, "I'll give you an outline to what is happening and how we're going to do this meeting." Uh, I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna touch each one of the, the agenda items. If everyone has an agenda with them, we'll go over the agenda items. We're gonna give the, um, the applicant a chance to speak and do his presentation. After that, we'll go through the, each of the key SEACER issues. Let the board members speak to, um, both board members speak to the, um, the issues themselves, any of their concerns. Then we'll go back, Mr. First, and have your team address any of the, the concerns, um, you know, how you've handled any of the issues, or, or not. Uh, and we'll continue that all the way down through all of the key SEACER issues and points down to, um, you know, the final part of the night. Now, I, I don't expect any answers to come out of tonight. That's not what we're here for, but we are just trying to get a better understanding of what has been missed, if anything, what you've accomplished, and where we stand with the project, um, to date. So I will turn over, um, our, well, I'll, I'll say this too, only because it's, that's almost like my planning board meeting. I want to thank friends for helping me out with this a bit. Um, I'm gonna say that I think that as long as what we're doing, having these meetings go on through the Zoom, we should really respect each other's conversation, wait till they're done talking, um, give them a second or two so that we don't get stepping on each other, and, um, somebody's maybe extremely valid point or concern being expressed, not be hurt. So I, I value that. I think that everybody's always, and our meetings, extremely professional, and, um, they handle, you know, pretty much, uh, getting through the meetings without having, um, somebody not getting their point across. So, again, I'm gonna turn over this part to Paul, who is our attorney, our land use attorney for the town, and he's got a, a little bit of an introduction to do too, so...
Okay. All right. Thank you all for being here tonight. As we, uh, we prepared an MO that we've shared with both boards, uh, providing, um, our consulting engineer, uh, my and Dave Barton's thoughts, uh, for consideration by both of the boards. Um, where we are procedurally at this point, just to, so we're all on the same page. Uh, the applicant has submitted a special use permanent application to the planning board for its assisted living facility that it, that it's proposing. It has not, at this point, submitted an application uh, for what we call the PRRD, which is more the residential amenities uh, that are beyond the assisted living facility. And, uh, as far as we know at this point, we're, we're not certain, uh, when or if such an application will be made. Uh, the, the way that SEACER works is that both of these pieces have to be considered at the same time because they're related. So that even though the information we have for the PRRD is, uh, much more general at this point than what we have for the assisted living facility, um, they need to be looked at together. Um, the planning board is the lead agency for SEACER purposes, which means that it, it falls to the planning board, um, to make a determination uh, whether or not there are any potential significant adverse impacts that would arise from this proposed action. And that's taking into account the proposal, uh, in terms of development that the applicant has made, but also the measures that they've proposed for mitigating those impacts. So taking those into consideration, the planning board needs to make a determination of significance. Um, if it determines that there are one or more significant adverse impacts, then it would, uh, ask the applicant to prepare an environmental impact statement. And that environmental impact statement would be focused on the significant adverse impacts that have been identified. Um, so that's, that's really the, the, the other alternative. If the, if the board determines, the planning board determines that there is, would be no significant adverse impacts from the project, then, um, the view of the project would proceed, uh, for the assisted living facility. That would involve the, the special use permit review and, and, um, making sure that the project meets those standards. Um, and it would also mean site plan review. So that's where you get into a lot more of the detailed, uh, review work that would go along with, uh, that project. As, as far as the PRRD is concerned, if and when an application is ever made, uh, then, uh, based on the, that we, uh, that the town board, uh, has adopted for PRRDs, uh, the first step would be, uh, for a review committee made up of, uh, town board members, planning board members, and the ZBA to look at, at the PRRD, uh, preliminarily and make a recommendation to the town board. Uh, the town board would then, uh, have the, uh, option of deciding whether to entertain an application for a PRRD or not. Um, if it decides to entertain an application for a PRRD, there would be, uh, further, uh, SEACER review and review of that application based on the PRRD standards. Um, and that would occur through the town board's process. And then if the town board establishes a PRRD, the, it, what would follow is planning board review, um, based on the site plan criteria, um, that are provided by the zoning code. So that's sort of an overview of the process. One, uh, really key, uh, part of SEACER is, uh, and it goes to the, you know, legal basis for the decisions that are made. We want to take a hard look at all the issues. But we need to, uh, do that. There's always a test of reasonableness associated with SEACER review. So, you know, that, that, you know, you, you don't, you don't ask for things that are outside the reasonable scope of what the, uh, impacts related to the project, uh, would be. So that's sort of an ongoing test that we have to subject ourselves to. Um, that's all I had in terms of preliminary comments, and, um, Andy Lern and Dave Barton and I will be all, will all be available for any questions as we go through this. And, uh, I guess at this point, John First, if you're ready, I'll turn the ball over to you and you can, uh, introduce the project, unless there's any, uh, initial threshold questions from anyone about the process.
Paul, Joe Mizetti, how are you?
Good, Joe.
Just a quick question. So we have to consider, for the environmental impact, both phases, even though they're not, or may not build a second phase. Is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's, it's one of the, uh, one of the touchstones of SEACER is if you have related phases of a project, even if one's only potential, you still have to look at it. The other thing, and, and I should have mentioned this, Joe, it's actually a good, uh, point that I should, put out there, that, that even though the PRRD is, uh, you know, there's, it may never, it may, may never apply for a PRRD because SEACER requires them to be reviewed together until the, until SEACER is complied with by the planning board. They can't finish their review of the assisted living facility. So we're sort of stuck in time until the SEACER determination is made. And, and there actually is a timeframe, um, that SEACER requires for making a determination. Um, and that is 20 days after the lead agency is determined that it has enough information to make that determination. So that's actually one of the questions for you all tonight is, um, you know, if there are information gaps that can't be adequately addressed, what, what more information is needed before, before the planning board can make its determination? Is that helpful, Joe?
Yeah, thanks, Paul. And, and one other quick question. The report you sent us, um, regarding the environmental assessment, that report, and I don't want to get into it, it's just one quick question. That was based on both phases, correct?
That is, and, and we were looking at the, uh, PRRD at this point as, as really conceptual. We have some, uh, pretty detailed information, um, related to issues like traffic and stormwater, um, and, and the water in sewer. It, it was based on the original application, primarily based on the original application that they had submitted before the moratorium. Um, they've updated some of that information. Um, so we do have some good detailed information, as Andy will be able to describe, for some of the issue areas. For, for other issue areas, uh, the planning board's done a lot of work on the assisted living facility. Um, and, you know, we have landscaping and lighting plans and all that sort of thing for the assisted living facility. Uh, that level of detail, uh, which would be, uh, substantial, uh, in terms of the information that would have to be developed, but also the, the cost to the applicant has not been done for the PRRD at this point, uh, primarily because, as I understand it, that, uh, they're uncertain as to the timing, as to when they would bring an application forward.
All right, thanks, Paul.
Yep. John?
Thank you, Paul. I, I want to first thank everybody for organizing this meeting, a special meeting. I know you guys have a busy schedule as it is. Um, Dave, if, if you can let Kelly Leibert share, she has the PowerPoint presentation.
She's good to go.
She can, she'll share that, because I'm gonna run through the first few slides, and then I'm really just gonna turn it over to our consultants and the experts, and, you know, as we talk about the details. So, um, you know, obviously, this is, uh, you know, everyone's familiar with the project. It's, has a couple of names. It has the villages at Highland. It's also known as the village in the Hudson Valley. Um, you know, and I think you're all familiar with our model, really. This is not just a senior housing development. It's really a life plan community. Uh, it's gonna be located on approximately 56, um, point three acres. Um, and it's really just an opportunity for seniors, um, to have many services. Um, you know, many amenities, healthcare, um, to really address, uh, the housing needs and, and the life needs of the town's aging population. Uh, we're looking to support not just the physical, but the social engagement of the seniors. Currently, and, and Paul kind of touched upon it, and currently, you know, we have, um, the assisted living facility, uh, which is proposed and permitted by special use permit, um, that will be licensed by the Department of Health. It'll provide various levels of care, uh, including a special dementia, um, specialization. Uh, it's, the assisted living facility will also contain an adult daycare facility, which is also permitted by special use permit under the, uh, current code. Um, there'll be an accessory sales office, as well as accessory off-street parking. Uh, there'll be a, a construction of a healthcare center lane, uh, that'll extend from Mayor Drive into, into the development. Uh, but we'll also have access from Route 9W. And finally, as, as Paul, your attorney, had mentioned, you know, there's this also potential future, uh, PRRD conceptual application that we've included, uh, for SEACER purposes. Um, and, you know, the conceptual plan shows approximately 178 dwelling units. That's gonna include a clubhouse, as well as numerous recreational amenities, uh, including, uh, large amounts of open space within a gated community. And we'll get into a little bit more detail on that a, as I turn it over to the consultants, and we have many consultants here tonight. Um, many of them, which you're, I'm sure you're familiar with, and they'll, uh, speak, uh, you know, when, uh, their topic comes up. Um, so essentially, I'm gonna, I'll provide a, a finish, a brief overview. Then Kelly will take you into the design drawings. Um, then Mike McCormick, the architect, will go through the renderings. Uh, and then we, um, we're also gonna hit each of the major SEACER compliance topics. Uh, under the SEACER regs, they, they have, I, you know, there, there's basically an outline of, of all the SEACER issues. So, uh, we've basically hit all the major topics and kind of summarized why we believe this, uh, it does warrant a negative declaration after taking your hard look. Uh, and then finally, we'll end with the questions, and we'll certainly, we're, we'll hope to answer all your questions tonight. A little bit about the history of this project, because this has been, um, you know, before the planning board, before the town for a while. Originally, uh, in 2019, it was, um, submitted, I believe, back in March of 2019, the process was started. And that was under the old town regulations for the CCRC. There are applications and submissions, uh, supplemental submissions were submitted in July, August, October of 2019. Uh, it also included a, a submission back in January of 2020, and again, this was all under the old CCRC regulations. At that time, the project proposal, uh, was much larger. I believe it was approximately 220 units. There were also, uh, numerous multi-story structures. I think there were two or three structures over. Um, I think they were about four stories. Um, so the project, uh, has kind of, um, developed and changed over time. Uh, we even at that time submitted an application to the ZBA, uh, again, under the old CCRC regulations. There was a question as far as the interpretation and, uh, of certain language within the old regulations. And then as everybody's aware, uh, the town adopted the moratorium at, in, in January of 2020. Then we had numerous town board submissions, uh, requesting a waiver from the moratorium. At first, we were asking for a waiver for the entire project. Then we modified that waiver request to only include the assisted living facility. Uh, eventually, the town board did grant the waiver request for the assisted living facility in the summer of, I think it was July of 2020. And then thereafter, there's, uh, been subsequent, um, submissions to the planning board. Now that we're back, we had the waiver, um, for the moratorium. You know, there were submissions in August, uh, September, October, November. Even, um, you know, all the way up to the end of 2020. Um, I think in November of 2020 is when the town actually adopted the new PRRD regulations. So based upon those new regulations, we were able to kind of provide a, a consistency analysis for what our conceptual plan is. So in 2021, we did submit to the planning board updated environmental assessment forms, including, uh, Part 1, Part 2, Part 3. Um, and then, again, we're not only talking about the ALF for, for SEACER purposes. We're also talking about the, the PRRD or, or the senior housing at the back portion of the property. And then finally, in February 8th, uh, we updated those SEACER documents because there were some tweaks and changes along the way, based upon planning board meetings and suggestions from the consultants and, and as well as the planning board. We did tweak the project along the way, you know, from August of 2020 till January of 2021. So we made a, a comprehensive submission in February of 2021. Uh, we submitted binders to both the town board, as well as the planning board members, obviously because the town board is also, you know, should be involved in, in the SEACER process. And again, it was some revised EAFs, uh, as well as some additional information. In addition, in February, we also had met with the Sewer and Water Committee, and we'll talk about that a little bit more detail later, but we did make submissions to them because there were some, um, questions, um, regarding, you know, the water, uh, and how to service the site and whether there was proper flow. Um, so here is, on this slide, is basically the, the submission, the last submission we made on February 8th. And it shows that not only did we submit the Part 1, and the Part 2, and the Part 3 of the EAF, which the Part 3 kind of serves, uh, as a potential basis for the negative declaration. So the Part 1 has the technical information. The Part 2 kind of goes through a checklist of, okay, what needs to be studied, further studied, what doesn't? And then the Part 3 kind of works off of that checklist, and whatever was checked off as needing further study, we did that analysis, you know, we, we did kind of a, an analysis, and as part of that analysis, we cited all these studies that were completed, and those were, uh, basically attached, um, at the end of the Part 3 EAF. And again, um, to kind of solidify the hard look that's, you know, been taken and that should really support the neck deck in our mind. Um, okay, next slide. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kelly Leibert now. Um, she's the, the project planner, and she's gonna go through these slides and then, uh, really kind of hand it off to her at this point. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Again, this is Kelly Leibert. What I'm gonna do, uh, is just try to quantify a lot of information that we've submitted, uh, to the town board and the planning board into a few concise, um, slides. So I'll go through these, and then at the end, if anyone has any questions, please feel free to ask. Um, just to get everyone's perspective, um, the existing conditions, the site consists of seven parcels. Um, access is from, um, right now, frontage is from Route 9W and Mayor Drive, as well as Apple Lane. Um, there's a small house on the end of the property that is included in the project area. Um, we have provided the overall project area being 62 acres, um, but the property, or the project area for the PRRD and the ALF is really 56.3. And the reason being is that, um, although the development isn't shown on this aerial photograph, the project also includes the self-storage facility because we have created an emergency access drive, which I will show you later, from this parcel, and so we needed to include that in the project area. Although, other than the emergency access drive, there's no development being shown on that, um, area. So you'll see throughout the document, there's a reference to 62 acres, which is the total project area, but again, the development area that we're speaking of, um, for purposes of SEACER is the 56.3. Um, again, the frontage is on Route 9W, Mayor Drive and Apple Lane, and, um, the zoning is the R1 half. And this is just another, um, copy of the existing conditions. It's the existing survey map that we had provided for the property, which is, um, again, in the submission documents that John had referenced. Um, this is, uh, the start of the site plan package, and what we've done is provided you with a detailed, um, set of drawings showing the focus area, which is the proposed structures for the ALF. Um, this consists of two structures. For purposes of orientation on the drawing, Route 9W is on the bottom of, uh, the plan, and Mayor Drive is on your left, with access to the site being from Mayor Drive and from Route 9W. And we're proposing two structures. So this one first dark area is the ALF, which is on the assisted living facility, two-story structure, which, as John had indicated, is especially permitted use. Um, in addition, we're proposing, uh, a small sales office, which is on the upper portion of the property by the cul-de-sac. Um, again, access being from Mayor Drive, uh, through the cul-de-sac with parking on the top and on the bottom, totaling 74 parking spaces. We have, uh, designed this site so that it's consistent with, um, not only the comp plan, but with the bulk requirements and parking requirements in the zoning code. Um, all of these references are on the site plan and, um, throughout the, uh, SEACER documents that we have provided you. For purposes of the SEACER analysis, again, as John and Paul had indicated, we have provided you with reference sheets for the full development of the PRRD plan. Again, for purposes of showing SEACER compliance, um, this is the proposed, uh, future potential layout, um, which John had indicated, 178 residential dwelling units, um, with a clubhouse and some recreational amenities in a gated community. This provides you with, um, a good overall look of the property. Um, again, as I indicated before, this area here is, um, the existing self-storage facility, and we'll go into some detail later, but, uh, just for purposes of using this drawing, this shows that alternative emergency access off of, um, the self-storage facility. We also provided, again, for purposes of SEACER, an overall grading plan, just to show, um, the board, the town consultants, that the site has been properly engineered. Um, full grading plan shows that it's, the, uh, design is feasible. We've avoided the steep slopes to the maximum extent possible. Um, we've protected the, um, Twister's Gole Creek, uh, in the rear of the property, and, um, the erosion sediment control measures will certainly be put in place, uh, during construction of the project. This plan shows you the detailed grading plan for the ALF project. Um, again, another, uh, drawing showing you the emergency access lane from the self-storage facility. We have provided you with a detailed lighting plan. We have provided you with a detailed lighting plan. Again, this is just a section of the lighting plan. There's details referencing the lights. And this is a photometric drawing showing what the intensity of the light would be at each base location and each wall location for the lights, showing that there is little to no off-site light impacts on the nearby properties. All of the lighting is proposed as the nighttime compliant. This shows a proposed overall utility plan. Again, for secret purposes, we've included the ALF and the PRRD to show compliance and that the water and sewer can certainly be designed, meeting proper engineering principles. The project also includes a lot line revision. We are consolidating lots and absorbing some of the acreage on the self-storage facility into Lot 2 and Lot 1. So we're going to create Lot Number 1, which would be a consolidation of parcels completing 12.2 acres. Lot 2 would be primarily the PRRD in the rear of the property, which would include 44.1 acres. Although difficult to see from the way that we presented this plan, we have provided a detailed landscaping plan for the ALF and previously for the entire project, including the PRRD. We have blown up the landscaping plans just so that you can see the details relative to the trees, the planting islands, et cetera. This section of the landscaping plan is the intersection of Mayor Drive and Route 9W. And the gray area would be the new entrance road for the ALF off of Mayor Drive. Again, just to provide you with some details relative to the number of trees and shrubs. Just a note, for the ALF alone, the project is proposing 276 new shrubbery, 297 new trees. And throughout the project, a third of the project will be preserved as open space and protected with conservation easements. This is the detailed landscaping plan around the primary building for the ALF. And this is the upper portion of the landscaping for the end of the cul-de-sac. One of the improvements that we really want to make sure that the town is familiar with is the level of effort with respect to the new sidewalks that we're proposing as part of this project. So in addition to the walkability of the interior of the site, we are proposing pedestrian connectivity for our project. And for those who may also want to be using the sidewalks for other purposes. So on this plan, you can see this white dash line represents the length of the new sidewalks that the applicant is proposing to install, not only along Mayor Drive and along Route 9W, but also along Argent Drive and into the adjoining property, including crosswalks. In total, the new sidewalks are approximately 4,700 linear feet of public sidewalk, which is almost a mile of new sidewalks. The elevations, I'm going to turn over for a few minutes, if I can, to Don Petricola and/or Mike McCormick. And they're going to walk you through the elevations for the project.
Don, are you on?
He was on. Yes. Good evening. Don Petroncola with Liston McCormick Van Bors. So these elevations and the sections are pretty vital to understanding this building. The building is a two-story facility, but it is terraced into the hillside. From the center of Route 9W to the new healthcare center lane at the west of the facility, the rise in grade is approximately 54 feet. So the building steps back and is terraced back to the west. The way we have structured the facility is that the front of the, the building facing 9W has a larger roof, a large pitch, so that the sightline from a vehicle or pedestrian, you cannot see the building, the wing to the rear from the road, from the sidewalk. So the G1 is the front elevation that you would see from facing 9W. And A1 is the elevation facing healthcare center lane to the rear. Kelly, we have the renderings next. This is the sales office off to, to the side and is based on the images of the cottages that will be constructed in a future phase, fairly simple, one-story facility, cited there. For the cottages that will be constructed as part of Phase 2, we're developing a palette of architectural diversity, different colors, different materials, slightly different modifications to the entrances and the gables and the roofs, so that we have a diversity in character and interest in the, in the neighborhood as you're traversing through. But essentially the same type of materials, so that there is a common thread and a theme, so that the community does have a cohesive feel. This is the rendering of the front entrance to the assisted living facility from 9W at the north end coming into the building. So you've got the U-shaped structure. The middle component is the entrance with a port-cochere with the main lobby and the dining room above that. So what we've tried to do is really break down the, the massing of the building. So it is just not a large bar building and we're presenting what, you know, should feel more house-like in scale from the neighborhood as you're traversing on 9W.
And the idea is to use Hudson Valley vernacular materials. As you can see in the previous slide, there's stone, there's clamber, there's shingles. So it really ties in with the nature and the fabric of the, of the area, which will really provide for a beautiful place in the world for the residents and as well, the people that go past us every single day.
This is a street view of the subsequent phase for the cottages. And to give you an idea of the, you know, similar theme, but different images of the, the unit types to create that, you know, street neighborhood, every unit will have a front porch and sidewalks. This is community garden, community activity space that will be incorporated into that facility as well.
Okay, I'm gonna, and this is Kelly Leibert again, so I'm going to pick up. And from here, throughout the rest of the document, we're going to talk about the seeker compliance. And as Paul and John had indicated, we have completed a full Part 1, Part 2, and Part 3 EAF. This review moving forward on the presentation focuses primarily on the section of the Part 2, wherein John had indicated, we complete what we would call a threshold test for each of the major categories. And for each of the major categories where we indicate that there is a threshold that may be met, we have provided the details, again, as John indicated in the Part 3, substantiating what we're proposing as far as design measures to address those impacts. Okay, the first item, again, if anyone were following along, I'm following sequentially and numerically the threshold impacts that are identified in the Part 2, the first being the impact on land. So we are proposing the disturbance of 42 acres. That essentially means areas where the soil will be disturbed or affected. We have provided detailed engineering and grading plans. We've provided soil testing and soil removal plan for some of the contaminated soil. We are proposing a significant amount of new landscaping relative to the impervious area. Again, 276 shrubs and 297 new trees. As part of the design, one of the measures that we're proposing is the 5% ADA grades are maintained throughout the site. Steep slopes have been avoided to the maximum extent possible. And we have provided documentation for all of these highlighted sections in the documents that we provided. And of course, we have provided a detailed SWIP. And throughout construction, there will be SWIP inspections completed by the applicant and by the town's MS4 coordinator. The second item on the Part 2, where there was a threshold addressed, had to do with surface water and potential impacts relative to surface water. There are no impacts on this project for, to the DEC wetlands, no impacts to federal wetlands and no impact to flood plains. There is the Twatyskill Creek that is located in the back of the project and there will be no impact to this area. The closest development is approximately 275 feet away from the creek. And the creek will be surrounded by a future designated open space area and then therefore protected. The next item has to do with groundwater. For a moment, I'm going to turn this over to Snyder Engineering, who has been working on the water resources and sanitary disposal issues, which is primarily the focus on these next few slides. So I'm going to turn this over to Zach if he is on the call. Zach. Bueller. Does anyone know if Zach is on the call?
He is on the call and he is unmuted.
Okay, if he doesn't pick up, then I'll just carry it through here. We have completed a very detailed analysis of the water demands and the sanitary sewer demands for this particular project. We have, as we had indicated before, worked very, very closely with the town engineer and the town water sewer committee, who has been fantastic in working with us. The conclusion after many, many months and many detailed reports is that the town is able to provide the potable water service and the fire suppression service for this project. And the town can accept the sanitary sewer. I did, on the bottom of this slide, put that the report is forthcoming from Clark Patterson Lee, but we were fortunate enough tonight to actually receive before the meeting CPL's letter, really summarizing, again, I probably don't want to go into too much detail, but many, many months of work collectively together and analysis by Snyder Engineering, Willingham, and Clark Patterson Lee and the Water and Sewer Committee to conclude that the town will be able to provide the services. There are improvements that the applicant has indicated willingness to provide. We are certainly able to go into these details if the town board or the planning board wants us to do this after the presentation and talk about what some of those improvements are that are required. The next threshold had to do with flooding. Again, these are taken right from the Part 2 EAF. We have provided, again, an engineered grading plan and erosion sediment control plan and a full stormwater pollution prevention plan, again, again, which will be enforced during the construction of the project. And so this issue has been adequately addressed. Next issue has to do with endangered plants and animals. And when we start this process, we generally reach out to the permitting agencies, New York State DEC primarily. We did reach out to New York State DC and found out that there were some potential habitat for endangered and threatened species. The Indiana bat, northern long-eared bat, bog turtle, Virginia snake root, golden corallidus, velvety push clover and straw sedge. We hired Ecological Solutions and they completed a full habitat suitability analysis and field investigations. There were no indications of some of these endangered species last being reported in the late 1800s, 1900s. And none of these species were observed in the project area. The project is suitable, as many are in this area, for the bat habitat and the normal conditions that we see putting in place on projects throughout the Hudson Valley, which is no work within the trees during the limited summer months. And then after October, being able to move forward was the recommended guidelines. And we've carried those through in our secret documents and on the plans. Next item has to do with agricultural resources. So we have provided all the details relative to the property and the agricultural resources in the area. This site is not actively farmed. As according to the agricultural data statement that we completed and the analysis in the town, there is no farming within 500 feet of this project area. The site does contain elevated levels of metals and pesticides, really precluding it from being used for future agricultural purposes. It is next to the Route 9W corridor, making it less valuable for agricultural purposes. And the comp plan does encourage the elimination of abandoned orchards and reuse of these properties. So this action is consistent with the town comp plan. The next item has to deal with aesthetic resources. And although this is just a snapshot of some of the information that we provided relative to aesthetic resources, I just wanted to include this so you had an understanding of the level of detail that we've gone to. We have provided, as you saw before, the elevations and the renderings. And there are a significant amount of sections that are in the submission, illustrating that the project is not visible from any aesthetic valuable resources in the area. Impact on historic resources, there are no historic properties listed or any properties that have historic significance on or near the property, which is the threshold test. The site is also not located next to a historic district. And as required for the project, we did reach out and contact the Office of Park Recreation and Historic Preservation, commonly called OPRHP, to communicate with them regarding the project. And after a thorough review by their office, they equally concluded that the project would not have an impact on any historic properties and archaeological properties in the area. And so we provided that correspondence to you. Next threshold has to do with the impact on open space. This is an overall, again, plan showing the ALF and the PRRD. The project applicant is proposing the preservation of approximately 18 acres of the project area's open space. This includes 10 acres, which are down by the Twatyskill Creek. And the open areas that we discussed and we proposed to the planning board will be permanently protected with conservation easements and those are recorded in the county clerk's office. The next few slides have to do with transportation. At this moment, I'm going to turn this presentation over to Ken Worsted, so he can summarize the work that we've done with respect to the traffic analysis.
Thank you, Kelly. We've been working on this project even going back further than, than John's timeline. We started this in 2017. And at the time, the, the client was looking at 362 market rate, you know, townhouses and apartments and 63,000 square foot of commercial. And we knew right off the bat that access was going to be an issue, you know, it's a difficult site with where it's located. And the first thing we did was really start looking at how to get the, the project down to, to Route 9W. And we had previously done the project, the storage unit project. So we knew DOT was going to be, going to be concerned with turning movements. And we were very unlikely to get a project like this approved by just coming into Route 9W in the middle of, of that section and expecting to get, you know, left turns in and out and everything else. So that was our main focus in 2017. We produced a tech memo on that, provided that to DOT. And they confirmed that connecting to Mayor Drive and putting in a new signal at Route 9W and Mayor was the, the best route to go. Fast forward to 2018, we had taken that information and we prepared a traffic study based on that development scenario. And at the time, we included a number of other developments that were on the books or, you know, anticipated at that time. The first included the storage facility, which is now open. The second was a Mavis tire, which was going to be right south of Dunkin' Donuts, but that has since changed into a, an Autozone. The 72 apartments, which are now behind or being constructed right now behind the Dollar General. And then we had 120 single-family homes proposed on, on Argent Drive. So we had taken all that into account. We had produced that traffic study in July. Right about the, the time we had submitted it to DOT, the client said, hold on, we're going to change course here. And over the next 12 months, the, the client had looked at changing the project more into a, a senior lifestyle retirement, you know, community. So in July of 2019, we came back with, you know, the 212 senior independent living homes, 135-bed assisted living facility. the 212 senior independent living homes, 135-bed assisted living facility, and 11,000 square feet for the urgent care. We had still included all the other improvement or all the other projects that we discussed previously. However, Dollar General was now, you know, its own entity out in front of the apartments. So we had included all those because we knew they were going before the board and, you know, being processed, you know, through the application. So we wanted to include that as part of our background, you know, traffic volumes. Through the next six to eight months, we had numerous comments from the town and DOT. We followed those up with response to comments and various analyses. And then in January of 2020, we had updated our traffic study to address a number of comments, but also to include the views, which at the time was 44 apartments, 14,000 square foot of retail, and 6,600 of office down at the corner Chapel Hill and 9W. So we had gone through that, produced that information and submitted that. And then over the course of, you know, the 2020, obviously we had the moratorium, so we hadn't produced any real updates. But as we got closer to the end of the year, the number of, there was a number of changes on site. The buildings, you know, became stepped. The urgent care had changed. So we did an update, you know, at the end of last year and reflected the 175 senior units, 135-bed, 5,000 square feet of primary care. And still included all those other development projects, even though by that time, the storage facility had been built, the Autozone had been built. You know, I don't think the Dollar General is open yet, but it's pretty close to. And obviously, the apartments behind it is under construction. But also in that time, the 120 single-family units that we had assumed back on Argent Drive had morphed. And that is now 57 senior apartments. That in itself represents about an 87% decrease in traffic just from that project. And then we also knew the views had challenges in terms of their access. I recall them going to the county, and nobody was too thrilled about their proposal to change that kind of one-way slip ramp into partially two-way. And over that time, they came back and have modified their project as well with a, you know, about a 17% reduction. So we also became aware that there's two new projects that have come forward. And that includes the sewers down on the southwest corner of Chapel Hill. And then behind the Walgreens, there's another kind of mixed-use project, including potentially a gas convenience store, some apartments, some professional office, potentially a hotel. They're still working on how and what they want to present. So those traffic studies, having come in after the Villages project, they, as they complete their traffic analysis, which is underway currently, they will have to include everything that comes in that came in before. So they're going to look at, most recently, the views and the Villages, the Silver Gardens, Dollar General, et cetera, dating back to, you know, whenever the latest thing was completed. So with all that, with all that said, we had looked at, obviously, the traffic impacts along Route 9W. And one of the key things that we knew from the get-go, from, you know, four years ago, was we were going to have to put a traffic signal in at Mayor Drive. We were going to have to take out the striping that's there as you go northbound and create a proper left turn lane. That will allow people, obviously, to get out of the through traffic, wait there to turn left, and then be able to come into Mayor Drive and help facilitate, obviously, the residents that live up there, but also the project traffic coming and going from that street. That signal would also be tied into the Argent Drive signal. And this little kind of funny diagram that you see in this slide is basically a timeline of how those different phases will work. And I can explain it. It's a bit detailed if you're interested, but essentially, moving from left to right, these are the different movements that will turn green, you know, as they go through. But one of the interesting things is the southbound through movement, which is depicted by this number two, number three in this kind of 0.6 area here. Yep. The number below that, 75 seconds, that's basically how long that southbound movement will get, you know, green, yellow, and red. And that equates to about 72% of all the green time at that intersection, you know, will be given to southbound through. So part of that is why the results became what they were. You know, the level of service, which is kind of a report card for how intersections operate, you know, is a level service A's, and it ranges from A all the way to F, F being poor, you know, and failing. So one of the questions is why, you know, why, how can that be level service A? Well, because it's getting a majority of the green time, you know, as you go through that signal. That's not to say that traffic doesn't back up there. There are times where there can be some issues down at Chapel Hill, and that spills back, you know, going northbound up to this intersection. But the intersection itself, based on the volume trying to go through that and its phasing, it operates very well based on how we've configured it and made those two signals, the Mayor Drive and the Argent Drive, work together. So just to finish up, we've presented all this to DOT. They've looked at all the traffic analysis at this point, and their next step or our next step with them is to get into the detailed design in which we identify the lengths of all the turn lanes. We obviously have a concept, but they want to take that to the next step in their review process. Kelly or John?
Okay, this is Kelly again. Thank you, Ken, for that summary on the transportation. The next slide. The next threshold on the Part II EAF, and we are getting near the end, has to do with noise, odor, and light. Apologize for that typo. When we look at impacts from noise, we're generally looking at the proximity of the site and the surrounding ambient noise levels, being that this project is located and adjacent to the Route 9W corridor with significant noise resulting from the traffic. We then look at some of the impacts onsite and what are some of the noise generators. Generally, on projects like these, we see that the HVAC units are predominantly the highest generator for noise. In this particular situation, we have taken careful look at this. The architects at Lisco McCormick and Borges have analyzed the HVAC units and have identified units that will result in insignificant noise to the surrounding ambient area. We've identified these within our secret documents that we provided to you. In addition, we are proposing a significant landscaping buffer along the residential properties adjacent to this site. Again, that's evidenced on the landscaping plan, not only really to be a buffer for these properties in the commercial area, but to provide a buffer for light and for noise. Again, as I indicated, all of the lighting on the site will be the nighttime compliant and meet the code requirements in the town zoning code. Last but not least is the threshold test for the consistency with the community character and the consistency with the community plans, primarily the zoning code and the comp plans. Again, this project is especially permitted use. And we have provided, as John had indicated, a very detailed consistency analysis in our submission illustrating how the project is compliant with the zoning code, the comprehensive plan, and the special permit criteria found within the zoning code. The nearest structure for this project is 250 feet from Mayor Drive. The structure is 132 feet from 9W. And we have a buffer of almost 275 feet from the disturbed areas to the creek. As we had summarized, we've also minimized traffic impacts. We've proposed significant traffic improvements, not only to vehicular traffic on the Mayor 9W intersection, but also significant improvements to the pedestrian movability and the creation of the new sidewalks. We've also created buildings that we think were carefully crafted, utilizing the existing landscape and building the project into the existing grades onsite. Again, as Don had indicated, screening the majority of the buildings in the rear of the site. As far as the review and the approvals are concerned, I think Dave had done a good idea in summarizing some of these approvals and the review that's involved, of course, the Town of Lloyd Town Board for the potential for water and/or sewer district extensions. Again, if this is necessary. Town of Lloyd Planning Board has the special exception use permit, site plan review, and the lot line review approval. We've included the Town of Lloyd zoning board of appeals from the beginning of the project and the chance that a variance and area variance is required. To date, there are no area variances that are required for the project as it meets the town code. Ulster County Planning for 239M review. Ulster County Department of Health for water and sewer. New York State DC reviews the stormwater pollution prevention plan. New York State DOT, as Ken had indicated, reviewing and approving the traffic improvements. And New York State OPRHP, Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, which has already completed their review and provided us with the letter of no impact. So at that point, we've really summarized the project drawings, the project renderings, the seeker documentation and supporting information that we've provided for the project, justifying the design and addressing some of the threshold tests. We do have an entire team here that are available to answer any questions that you have tonight. I know we've provided you with a lot of written material and tried to summarize this in this PowerPoint presentation. So we're certainly available tonight, again, to answer any questions that you have.
So hi, my name is Joe Mizetti. Are we ready for questions?
Wait one second. What we want to do now is just hear from our staff to what it is that Dave just expressed to us. Maybe the staff has something else to add.
I'm sorry. Good question. So I figured it was questioned. I'm sorry, Scott.
So Scott, Dave Barton here. I have a couple of things I could do. Yes, no?
Oh, absolutely. Sorry.
Yeah, thanks. So you all got a letter last week. I know there was some consternation about that letter. The letter was an attempt to help you guys frame your discussion to think through some of the things that I think Kelly and your team, Kelly, I think you guys did a very nice job. I wish this presentation had come in when we got that, you know, that pamphlet you included in the 12-inch binder that sits on my desk. But a very nice presentation. Thank you. I do know that the board has some questions. We've fielded some of them. I'd like to remind the board that we are still in the secret process and some of the nitty-gritty stuff. You know, Franco and I share the same concern. And I don't want to speak for Franco, or he can do it all by himself. Frank and I share the same concerns with things like the access road, you know, that extra access road. But those are the sort of things we work out in site plan. You know, as we do with landscaping, you know, if the landscaping is sufficient in site plan, we'll unpack that. Or you guys will unpack that. You know, I've always been of the contention that I would love to see more landscaping in front of the building. I don't want to hide the building completely. I think the building is very attractive. But I think that you guys could think through about maybe some more, you know, varied trees, making sure that the applicant supplies male and female flowering trees. You know, part of the problem with only doing one type is allergens. So, you know, things like that. But what I think, and Paul can correct me, and Andy certainly can correct me, what we're looking for are the big-ticket items, the pieces that you don't think are satisfied in that pamphlet that they gave us. It's 12 inches thick. And we don't have to solve all the problems, but we have to make sure that they're aware of the problems, of the concerns you guys have. And they can answer whether they feel that they're offering good mitigation or not. And that's all I got. I don't want to, I don't want to be accused anymore of leading the board in any direction whatsoever. But I did want to compliment Kelly and the team about that presentation. That was very good.
Thank you.
Andy, is there anything from you?
Yeah, I'll just touch on a couple of things. This is Andy Lerner with CPL. I'll start with traffic, just to make a note that our traffic engineers have reviewed all of the traffic impact studies, submissions, and for the most part, with a few minor exceptions to be addressed in a new submission, our traffic engineers agree with the findings of those studies and that the traffic light and the other mitigations proposed are acceptable. I apologize that it didn't get to everyone. It may not have gotten to everyone sooner, but there was also a memo from our office this afternoon regarding the Sewer Water Committee. Kelly touched on it. As Kelly mentioned, there are some improvements that need to be made. But in general terms, the water supply capacity of the town is more than adequate to serve this project as well as the wastewater treatment capacity. There are some transmission issues that will need to be upgraded by the developer with a developer's agreement. But for the most part, it can be done without any trouble. As far as stormwater is concerned, you know, we have reviewed a preliminary SWIP. They've been able to show that they can meet the DEC standards and then some, specifically with regard to flow rate, you know, which would result in flooding downstream. They're able to control that. Also with regard to water quality and runoff production, which is, plays a factor in the amount of runoff produced by the new impervious surfaces that they'll generate. We're actually, they're showing that they can provide more than the minimum, which is a good thing. We try to push for that as much as possible in that particular area. As far as, I just also want to mention, Kelly had pointed out the review agencies. One thing that we will also be seeking assistance from the county health department on is the review of the soil contamination, the soil remediation plan. That is their, those are their requirements that they've prepared their plan to, and we will make sure that the health department is on board with their, with the proposed mitigations there. That's about it. I won't deliver it anymore.
Okay, now I'll ask Paul, would you like to touch on anything at all?
I really don't have much to add. I guess the only thing that I would go back to is to remind ourselves that, and you saw it through the presentation, there's considerably less detail provided for the PRRD than there is for the assisted living facility. And that's intentional from the applicant's perspective because they don't know whether or not they are going to do a PRRD. So we don't have full-blown landscaping plans. We don't have the same level of detail in terms of lighting plans. And, you know, those would be forthcoming with an actual application. In addition, you know, there may be some alterations to the configuration, the number of units that the town board is willing to consider as part of any PRRD. There may be some desire to further avoid steep slopes or protect sensitive areas, to use the topography to, you know, limit visual impacts. Because while we don't have any visual impacts from important areas, and that is usually one of the, that is the main thing that seeker looks at for, in terms of visual impacts. You know, whether or not there are impacts from Route 9W or other areas, that will remain to be seen and will be reviewed, I presume, by the town board if and when a PRRD application is made. So that's all I have at this point. And I'll join Andy and Dave in listening to questions and responding. responding as, as we, we tend to help the boards with their deliberations.
Great. So Paul, I was going to ask though, if the PRRD at, at a future time, it has been applied for further SEACER evaluation could take place based on just that part of the project?
Yes, and, and you know, there's really two pieces to that. One is that in terms of where we are when any application is made for an issue like traffic. If, if at that point in time, there are other developments that have come forward that are significantly contributing to traffic, then the application applicant would need to show that there's consistency between what we're looking at today and what we're looking at then. I either the impacts aren't greater, haven't become more significant over time. The other piece to it is, and, and this is, it's really akin to, you know, what, what's done with a general environmental impact statement at times is that we're looking at a conceptual project. And so when the actual project comes in, we're basically looking at a different action. And that will depend, as I said, on what the town board is willing to look at. So you know, there may be additional impacts, there may be less impacts. But SEACER review to make sure that, 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 that's done properly would be appropriate at that time as well.
Okay, so we'll open up the floor to discussion. Just if you could state your name, ask one question at least right now so that everybody gets a chance and we're not monopolizing the, the meeting. It's important that everybody gets a chance at it if, if they have something to say or comment on. I think it would be just appropriate to give everybody that chance to do so. So Joe, I'm going to take it you had your first question since you had asked to go, so I'll leave you to the, your concerns.
Sure, I have a lot of questions, but I can wait to ask each one. It's fine. Just a quick question. Before, for the EAF form, who completed that? Did our planning board complete that or was that completed by the developer?
I'll, I'll speak to that, Scott, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Good question, Joe, because under SEACER, the applicant's job is to complete part one, which is basically the introductory information that, that tells you about the, the potential impacts. The part two is done by the lead agency. And the lead agency would go through at an appropriate point in time when it's ready to make its determination and say, is there an impact to seek to land? Is it small or is it large? And basically would go through that form. And then part three is also done by the lead agency. And that is for any impact that you identify that is large, you have to explain why it's not, it doesn't require an environmental impact statement. That it's a significant impact, but it's mitigated. So for example, like stormwater, that there will be, you know, development that occurs over 42 acres of disturbed area, but they're doing a stormwater plan that requires a DEC permit that requires that no more water leave the site than leaves today. And also requires that the quality of water is the same or better than it is today. So, but that's the kind of analysis that the lead agency would do. What, what the applicant has done and, and we do this in other contexts when we represent applicants. It is they presented their basically their pitch as to what are the impacts that are significant? And what are the reasons why you know, why from their perspective, those impacts are not significant adverse impacts that require an environmental impact statement? So it's, it's up to the, the lead agency.
So Paul, what you're saying is that they, they did phase one the way they're supposed to. So the full the fate, the part two of that form was done by our planning board. They sat around and they, they analyzed these question. That's what you're telling me?
Not at this point. That has not occurred. This is, that is the applicant's position on what the part two should say and the reasons why it says what it says.
So our planning board is going to go through the part two themselves and do it?
Yes, and, and ultimately, Joe, for whether or not, you know, if, if, if they do a negative declaration, the planning board would have to go through in pretty much the same way that, that we started to with, with our memo, our staff memo. They would have to go through each issue area and, and articulate why or why not there's a significant adverse impact.
So the letter that you sent us dated March 9th, that was based on the information from what you're telling me from the developer, not our planning board. So I should see a different memo once our planning board goes through this.
That was, no, that was based on the information that was submitted by the applicant on February 8th and represents the analysis of, of the towns staff. But you're right, when, when it actually comes down to it, the ultimate job falls to the lead agency. You know, which is the planning board in this case with the input of the town board to make that ultimate determination.
But the planning board didn't do the part two is what you just said.
We, we haven't gotten to that. We thought it would be premature before the town board had an opportunity to get up to speed. Because this is, you know, a very important from the town board's perspective as an involved agency.
Okay, so my question is to the traffic. So there's a couple of parts to this question is, is that in the presentation, they talk about coming through mayor and they talk about there's a traffic problem at the Chapel Hill. This project, even though we have to look at its entirety, although they're talking about just the first part, because that's what you told me before, if look at the entire phase two, would increase even a more constraint on that intersection. That also being said, the, the light would then also back up more like traffic on 9W. Why couldn't, I'm seeing in the maps, there's so many retaining walls built. Why couldn't another retaining wall be built? And the two intersections be lined up with Mayor Drive and, and the Hanafords, which would ease some of the traffic and create less of a burden?
You meant to say Argent?
Argent, I'm sorry.
We, we looked at that early on if I, if I can help answer that. We had, I guess the first part of your question is the AFL and the, the PRD in the back. Our traffic analysis included all of it. So it didn't look at just one part and not the other. As part of the SEACER process, you know, we're obligated to look at both of those parts. So we kind of have that covered. When it comes to Mayor Drive and the connection with Argent, that was looked at originally, I believe Andy had looked at the, the slopes and trying to get down to it. And more likely than not, Mayor Drive would come down at a much more steep angle to try and reach Argent. And it just wasn't, wouldn't happen. And I, I would speculate that that's why it's constructed the way it is. You know, it comes in, it turns and then it cuts across the hill as you start climbing in elevation. It's like a goat trail going up the side of a mountain. You know, you, you wouldn't just go straight up. You would cut across and go back and forth. So those are some of the issues that we looked at and with some retaining walls, we probably could have tied in the project into Argent Drive and use that signal. But it would have left Mayor Drive comes out to hang. They wouldn't have had any better access coming down, you know, into Route 9W. So when, when we were looking at this with DOT, DOT, you know, wrote a letter. They said, yes, the, the better access to try and connect over to Mayor Drive and signalize mayor and have it operate almost as if a signal a, a single intersection with Argent Drive. So that when you get the green light to go southbound at Argent Drive, you're also getting it at Mayor Drive. And you know, you make it through both of those lights.
And, and just so everybody knows, the letter from DOT that Ken is referring to is dated October 30th, 2017, and it's in the submission package.
Thanks. And, and one quick question, these traffic studies, were they done during COVID or before COVID happened? Because you know, traffic's a lot lighter now because of COVID, you know, but now it's lifting up, traffic's getting greater. I'm just interested to know when the, the study was done.
Yeah, it was all done before COVID and on a different project in another town. I have seen some counts from before COVID and currently. And there was anywhere from a 25 to 30% decrease, you know, in traffic. Part of that might be seasonal, but it's, I, I think, I think it's mainly because of the pandemic.
Thanks.
Kelly, I've been asked privately by some people if you could close your presentation. That way, I guess we could see each other's grimaces. Uh, thank you. Scott, you there? You're muted.
How's that better?
Yeah, you're good.
Is there anyone that has any comments on traffic? Any further comments on traffic? I'm going to take that as a no. How about water and sewer? Oh wait, that's Carl. Carl, go ahead. I see your hand, but you're out of the screen, buddy. And you're on mute.
Carl, you're on mute.
All right, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, hey, regarding traffic. It's Kenneth Burstead, you traffic manager?
Yes, yes, he is.
Anybody there? All right. I, I, that, that, the light you, the light you put in there, that's not going to be a through light. That's just basically a southbound and a northbound turn. Am I assumed that's correct there?
Correct. It, it would be very similar to, to how Argent Drive operates, meaning you have north and southbound Route 9W. And then you have an exit from, from Mayor, from Argent Drive. It's, it's the same principle, but just flip flopped. You have north and south on Route 9W and then you have an exit from Mayor Drive.
Okay. Well, there is sign that it's going to say no turn on red. I, I know that got discussed. And it was supposed to go over to the DOT and I don't know what the outcome of that was. Guys find anything about that or you're just going to leave it as, you know, as, as you presented it?
It's still part of our to do list. I know we have that comment from, I, I think we talked about that in the fall. That's on our agenda to bring up to DOT as we move into the next steps with, with their design review.
All right.
Joe, I'd like to ask Ken a quick, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sal, I, I just got a couple of questions and I'll get them out now. Andy, I know you said we looked at the traffic study. The projects that are before us now. Also, the feasibility study was for the projects that have us before us now. Basically, the traffic and the water and sewage can handle the projects that we're looking at right now. Am I assumed that is correct answer? Andy?
That is correct. And there's a, there's a, that is correct. And there's a, I circulated a memo that everybody should get. If you didn't get it tonight, you'll probably get it tomorrow that summarizes that fact and the improvement that will be required.
Okay, and my other question, Andy, is going to be steep slopes. There, there, from what I could see on the map, it seems to be there around 20%. Is that a correct assumption that they're about 20% grade up there?
I haven't measured it directly, but they're showing the steep slopes there, steep, steep slopes on their map. So you know, there's a couple of things we can do about that. We can try to limit the amount of disturbance that they have when they do have to enter and disturb steep slopes. We can also double up or triple up the amount of erosion controls required during construction. So there, there's, there's several things that we can do to help mitigate that during and after construction.
And, and my other question, how many stormwater ponds you going to have up there? But, but by, by what I'm seeing, I just got that binder. It looked like six, five or six. Is that correct?
That sounds about right. Yeah. There's also going to be some underground practices for the assisted living facility under the parking lot as well.
Okay, is that, that's something new? Is that, I'm not familiar with that at all, but that's, that's something new to control stormwater?
It's new, it's new for this board.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think we talked about it. I think it was added maybe in the fall. I can't remember exactly. Andy, do you? Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, we, we plan on supplementing the ponds for the ALF with, with underground storage if needed. We did, similar to what we did on Highland Storage. That, that has a bunch of underground storage over there.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll throw a couple of things out there. Yeah, there's a, like a 25 foot deep by about 100 foot long pond right behind Apple Lane. I think it's called P3. So that's in the vegetative buffer that's supposed to separate the parking lot from the people on Mayor Drive and the people on Apple Lane. And I guess the question is, how did that pond work with what's supposed to be a dense vegetative buffer? Because we just put that in the zoning. And you know, it's supposed to be big trees, evergreen trees. And, and the pond, by the way, is like 40 feet deep behind a couple of the houses on Apple Lane. So it's, it's, it's immense. So, and I have a lot of other questions, but go ahead and answer that one.
Uh, I, I guess if I were to answer that question, I would say that, that plan is conceptual and we can look at ways of moving it around. I think that's, you know, if that's a concern, I think we can look at how that could be adjusted to, to satisfy. You know, the, the screening and, you know, safety concerns.
I was actually asking you, Andy. I was asking the applicant, sorry.
Yeah, so the, the ponds shown on the plan are really the worst case scenario as far as SEACER goes. We oversize them. We don't think they need to be this big. We want to make sure that we're looking at all the impacts. They're going to end up being a lot more refined. We can tier them and not do one large one. We can incorporate rain gardens into next to the roads. So this is kind of just worst case and, and they can also be planted. Some of them I could have permanent pools so they can be made.
I agree. It's worst case right there. Yes. And along with that, I mean, there are 10 of these. And one of the reasons that you're taking the acreage from the storage seems to be to allow construction of more ponds up on that slope. And so I was concerned with three ponds that are on what is now an extremely steep slope. And really, everything in the northeast corner of the project current, that is currently over 15% slope already. And then with the terraces that you're adding, I did measurements and there were sections along the bridge ramp where I found at least 30% slopes with ponds in them. And I think my concern is, and then I'll, I'll put it in the form of a question, but my concern is both. This is very, very visible from the mid Hudson Bridge. In fact, when you drive across and you pass the toll booths, this green hill is, it fills your windscreen. It is like the beginning of Highland. Just really never noticed it until I started analyzing this. And you're like terracing it and cutting it and putting ponds on and regrading this very steep hill. So I guess is there an alternative that would not have such an impact there visually, grade wise and drainage wise?
So like I said, the, you know, this is, this is the worst case scenario on these ponds. They're bigger than they need to be. We did site them. Now, if you look behind Highland Storage, you look at that really steep slope. We're not, we're not in that area. There is an area to the north of that, that, that the slopes are much better. And, you know, I'll refine it as we refine the design with, with Andy's office. We'll really try to incorporate a lot more of this stormwater within the development and not have to do it on, in, in these larger columns.
It's, Joe, I'm a little confused by that statement. So you say this is the worst case scenario. Isn't this the scenario that you're planning to put forward to, to us?
I think this is Kelly Leibl. If I can jump in and I know if John First wants to jump in, I can sidestep sideways. The, as, as Paul Van Cott and as John First had indicated, the improvements that you're seeing on the PRRD, which is primarily, I believe, where you're speaking of, are shown for purposes of Seeker and to show that utilizing sound engineering, so this does meet the engineering principles and it does meet the SWIP principles. It can be designed. And as Paul had indicated, at this moment, we're not applying for the PRRD. We're, have applied for the ALF and are showing the PRRD because it's a known potential future project. As we move forward and as we were to, if we were to apply for the PRRD at that point, your comments are certainly well taken and I'm sure that Andy Lern's office and Andy Willingham's office would provide the greater detail, again, as Paul had indicated, for those design components at that time.
But Kelly, Paul started out the conversation that the phase two that you're not applying for must be taken into account. So shouldn't the presentation you put forward not be the worst case scenario, but be a scenario that touched upon and solved with a solution, all the issues that are bringing up, such as the traffic, such as the, the visual, such as the steep slopes. I mean, even in your, your, your presentation, you show sidewalks for the elderly people to be able to communicate and walk. And I think that's lovely. But, you know, some of those roads are 10% grade and our, our ordinances can't be above five. So, you know, I, I think that the plan you put forward shouldn't have been the worst scenario. It should have been a scenario of these are the issues on hand and this is how we solve them based on your, your zoning and your rules.
Can I speak to that a little bit?
Sure.
I, I think, you know, it's, it's a point well taken and that's why we're only at the conceptual level now. Joe, I think the, the, you know, the idea, what they show is that in terms of the impacts that have been or that are typically identified, you know, stormwater, traffic, you know, the, the connection to water and sewer, they've shown that there is an engineering way that a conceptual PRRD could be done in terms of the, the, you know, the issues that you're flagging and that Sal is flagging, you know, a lot of those issues. You know, I share, I had the same, you know, same question about potential visual impacts of this project, the, the upper portion of the project. You know, that's going to be the subject of an, an actual proposal made if and when they come forward with a PRRD. That's when, you know, I think that, that precisely the issues you're talking about, they're absolutely relevant and, and will need to be fully explored in terms of alternatives that can avoid steep slopes, that may limit the number of ponds or, you know, limit or, you know, change the location of the ponds. You know, for, at this point though, it's, it's just, you know, they, they've shown that, or tried to show that from an engineering standpoint, there is a way to do a PRRD on this hillside. And, and that's, you know, that's as far as they've been able to go at this point.
And all I could, if I could, Joe, just so you understand too, is when this comes before the town board, these are issues that you could raise with them during that PRRD application and make these things known. It being a worst case scenario means this is the absolute worst thing that could be going on right now. And the town board would have every effort or should make every effort to add those changes that they would be concerned with based on them getting the application for the PRRD. How am I with that?
That's good. And I think, I think it's really important that any determination made by the planning board at this point is not in any way of this configuration or this PRRD conceptual plan because.
Paul, can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I mean, you're not suggesting that the planning board would overlook an impact on the EAF, are you?
No, I would never.
Purposely overlook it?
Pardon?
You're, you're not saying that we would just dismiss an impact?
I didn't get that. Sal, I didn't get that at all. I wasn't thinking that Paul suggested that at all.
No.
I'm just asking him what he's, what he's saying.
You know.
I, I think there might be, I think there might be a general misunderstanding of how Seeker works. So I'm going to say this, and this is the last time I'll say it because I put it in a pretty good email last week. I've gotten some pretty good feedback on, you are not performing site plan right now. You're in Seeker. So I, I'm not sure why that's.
Oh, I'm well aware. We're doing Seeker, but if we have an impact.
Well, actually, Sal, you.
It's whatever is on the page.
You look like you're trying to get down in the weeds. So it looks like we're trying to get down in the weeds in the details. So what the, what you should be doing now, in my opinion, is looking for impacts. You're absolutely right. Does the applicant, that has the applicant offered mitigation that is reasonable for them? You are not right now on the PRRD going to try to unpack, if you're going to satisfy Seeker, you, you can't unpack the site plan for the PRRD because there is no PRRD.
So Dave, just, Dave, just, just give me some clarity here because, you know. So in the first breath from Paul, and Paul, you did a great job and, and the presentation you guys did was beautiful and it looks great on paper. And I guess we're trying now this, does it really work great in real life? And, and, you know, Scott, I, I thought I was here to ask questions tonight. So, so I'm going to ask my question. So I appreciate that, that feedback from you. But Dave, so Paul made a statement that this environmental assessment form needs to look at both phases, even though the phase two isn't going to be built and it's not in the tail, but it could potentially happen. And that's how this environmental assessment form is completed. Was that statement correct?
That is correct. You are looking at both facilities for Seeker, not site plan.
Right. So Seeker, so I'm talking strictly Seeker. So when I look at this form, and as we talked tonight, we have visuals that came up, we had traffic that came up. We have buffers, retention ponds. I have a question about height. You have 1.8 million square feet of rating over 42 acres, sleep soaps and sidewalks. So if you go back to the environmental assessment form that the planning board's supposed to fill out, which from, my understanding from Paul didn't, I, I don't see how it doesn't have a positive impact to go to the phase three and then really look at the mitigation of what that would look like.
Okay. Let me, let me, let me jump in here.
Hold on, hold on.
May I?
Yes, let me just finish. I, I finished my thoughts. So you can go ahead.
Okay. So I think that the really critical point, and I'll take you back to the beginning of the meeting, is we are looking for significant adverse impacts that have not been substantially mitigated by the applicant's proposal. When, you know, there are impacts, there will be impacts. Hopefully those impacts will be addressed to the maximum extent possible through the review, through the special use permit review, the site plan review, PRRD process review.
So, so.
The question is whether there are significant adverse impacts that haven't been adequately mitigated. And second point is the time has not arrived yet for the planning board to go through part two. Because the first thing, and I said this again at the beginning of the meeting, is that we need to make sure that the boards are comfortable, that sufficient information has been provided. And, and that's after looking at what the applicant's done, after looking at staff's analysis of what the applicant has done. And, and so, you know, you will get to that point where the planning board will properly go through part two and, and say, there's a significant impact that hasn't been adequately mitigated or there isn't. So that, you know, that point's coming, but, but we're still getting there. And the, the purpose of tonight was really to try to bring the town board up to speed because the planning board's been really, you know, plugging away at this.
So, yeah.
Make sure we are, we're on the same page in terms of, you know, what we're looking at and trying to accomplish.
Yeah. So Paul, I'm sure planning board, when they look at it, they'll do their due diligence and really look at those significant impacts and they do the part two. And, you know, I, I don't see, those are good, the visual, the traffic, the buffers, the runoff. The, the concern, I'm sure, and they'll figure out if there's a positive impact or a negative. But the, the concern I have is the 380,000 square foot building. And then we're talking about how it's going to be terraced. How does that low portion of the terrace, because it's from the most exposed structure factor into our 35 feet?
First of all, what's the size of the building? Maybe Don, can you just clarify the size of the building?
Yes, I believe we're around 120, 125,000 square feet total, all floors for the assisted living facility.
And within the diagram you showed, you showed a, a three story building with the, the terrace with the basement exposed on the one side. What is the, the feet of that when you measure it from the ground? Is that in our 35 feet code?
It's 30 feet. By definition of the code, which is the adjacent grade to the average height of the roof, we are under 30 feet on all four sides of the building. And I believe that has been reviewed and confirmed by Mr. Barton.
Okay.
Okay. So, and just to be clear, I just want to give everyone a chance to talk. I realize that some of us have more concerns than others, but I just want to make sure that all the board members get a chance to speak tonight. That's all. So if there anyone else that has to speak to this, any one of the, the traffic, water, sewer, any of the impacts that you're seeing?
Scott, Mike wanted to unmute himself, but he can't do it. I don't, I don't understand why Dave said he has to do it himself. It, it, could someone explain how he has to unmute himself?
He has to hit the microphone.
On his phone. Yeah, on his, on his phone. Hit that mute button on the phone. Cause I, I did that too. Did you see it?
In the meantime, could we ask somebody else if they have any comments?
My only comment was, I, I know that there was concerns about the water. I, I know Franco, you sat, you sat in on those meetings and, and, you know, it was about how they were going to get the water into certain areas of the project. And, you know, you guys feel good about like, you know, I wanted to hear from Franco because I know he's been sitting on it, you know, his thoughts on it.
Yeah, actually Claire, I just circulated to all the planning board members, a copy of the memo that came out from CPL as Andy stated today. And basically I'll give you the nuts and bolts. The water system and the sewer system will be private. There will be a master meter pit coming off of Apple. The system will be a loop system. They will need an operator for their private system. There will be no stand pipe. I know a lot of you guys have had issues with the stand pipes. All the upgrades to the stand pipe at Hudson Hills, all the equipment to the mains and to the sewer will be all borne by the owners of the property. They will work hand in hand with our CPL, our engineers. And then they will come up with a plan for the upgrade and then we will put that process into fruition. But it will cost taxpayers $0. I know that's what you guys want to hear. We worked hard on it. The system will work. It's a private system, so there will be no cost. There is enough storage and capacity at the water and sewer plant. There will be some upgrades to the sewer and that also will be borne on the developers. At this point, if the town board wants copies of the CPL letter that I just got right before this meeting, I can send it to you all. And if you have any questions, you can always reach out and call me. Any questions?
Yeah, Franco, when you say private, you just mean that they have to man, they have to man their sewer and water in order for it to get to the town, right? And that's, there's no sign of if they, if it is private, that it ever be abandoned by them. It would always be taken care of by them.
What will happen is, well, that's the problem. If the owners ever walk away from the property, then the health department or the DEC would actually mandate the town to take over the system. But as long as March's live and the, the project's thriving, they would need a private water operator. If the project ever turns hands, I would think there would be something that the lawyers will craft over my pay grade that basically says that the system will stay private. The town would only be responsible to the master meter pit.
Franco, it's Mizetti. How are you?
You're good, Joe. How are you?
I'm doing okay. Quick questions. You, you know how I feel about private water and sewer? Is there any way to do the project where it wouldn't be private?
What we did is, is we talked about it, Adam. Is there a way? There probably is. I mean, at what cost, Joe?
That's not my concern. My concern is what's better for the town. So it's.
Yeah, the town is, did you get a copy of the report?
I, I may have. Franco, you know, I got so many.
I could probably forward it to you.
Yeah, shoot me an email on it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it to the whole board. Basically, I think at this point, and I, I could let Andy, because he talked to Ray about it. But at this point, we feel that it would be better served if it was private.
Franco, if I could ask. It's Scott McCarthy again. Franco, I was going to ask, what is the, if it wasn't private, it would then become the town's responsibility to take care of the water throughout?
Yes.
So that would be an added cost to the town, much larger than having the possibility of somebody going in there.
Well, here's the cost that you're looking at. You're looking at the cost of. man-hours to go in and read all the meters where at this point, there's only one meter to read.
But it's maintenance too, right?
It's also they're responsible for all the maintenance on their property after the meter pit, on the water, and also on the sewer also too.
So then looking out for the town, it is much better for it to be a private system.
Exactly.
Okay, and then one quick question. I'm sorry, Lenny, one quick question and I'll let you start. Then if it is a private system, there's still, it's still metered, so the town makes out on, as far as the water and sewer.
Yes, basically Claire, all, all the sewers, yeah, whatever goes in goes through the water meter, that's what your sewer is based on.
Right, so go ahead, Lenny.
Right, and also just whatever is built and privately owned is still have to be reviewed and inspected by the town's engineers.
Exactly. Well, it, it actually all has to be submitted before it's built for approval.
Correct, so the town engineers, even though it's private, the town engineers are going to be reviewing it every step of the way.
Exactly, and they'll be inspecting.
As will the county health department.
Right.
So the likelihood of somebody walking away from their property like that, it, it's not so likely, right?
Uh, happened in Hudson Hills.
Okay, but I mean, a project like this where they're vested, aren't they vested here for? Don't they? Money comes in to, you know, to me, I, I don't, I would wonder if they would just pick up and leave, I guess.
That would be a question for the principals.
John?
John, Andy.
Well, I, I believe he's, actually, they're going to have, they're not even selling off the properties to individuals, they're going to have land leases involved, so, so they're basically going to be landlords. So yes, there is an incentive for them to opt to this and stick with this throughout the whole, you know, life of the, you know, all the buildings.
Okay.
Fred, go ahead.
Just, just, just quickly to insert to Claire's question, just as I was going on earlier, as Franco mentioned, I think Ray Jacasi just put out a water and sewer report to us, but it came out just as we were going on. So I think later, if you go look, you'll see something from, from Ray.
Yes, it did come out. Lenny, did you have something to ask?
Len?
Yeah, we still can't hear you, Lenny. Well, we hear that.
Lenny, you got to unmute yourself.
I'm pushing down on a damn button, Franco.
Good, you can't bring it now, so what's your question?
Anyway. What? No, what I'm just going to say that, you know, but the question's already been answered. You know, as that system is being built, it will be inspected as being built to the town specifications by CPL. They'll have someone on a job to inspect. In case of what you're saying, if someone should walk away, we own it, but it's, it's built back to our specification. They're going to build it, which is at no cost to us. And if they maintain it for ten years or twenty years, if they should happen to walk away from it, it would only be a matter of hiring one more water department employee, not like somebody that's got to stay there all the time or whatever. So they build it. If they do walk away at a later date, which I can't see because the way they have it figured, these people are association that are living up there, they're going to pay a fee. So, you know, if they do walk away, well, all of that stuff comes back to the town. And it would be quite a ways down the road, fifteen, twenty years, if it should happen. So I think our best bet, if this project goes forward, you know, build it the way that CPL and everybody is after them. They did a very good study at the water and sewer meeting that, that we had with those guys. Franco will attest to that. Franco had many questions, and I think they were all addressed at the meeting that we had. So as of right now, as far as the water and sewer project, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm going to go with that, that we, we do it like that.
Any other concerns anyone would like to bring up? Again, state your name because I can't see everybody on the, on the panel. Not seeing any. Paul or Dave, would you like to speak to where we're headed to or the rest of this meeting today?
That's really entirely up to you. I guess the question is what the boards would like to do in terms of next steps. Again, we're, we're heading towards a planning, planning board determination on seeker. So there's a question as to whether you know, the, the town board wants to add an opinion to that, how you would want to do that. And then the board ultimately needs to go through the part two of the seeker form and make its determination on whether or not there are any significant adverse impacts requiring environmental impact.
I, I think as far as the town board's concerned, I'll only speak for myself, the seeker, the seeker review is in your hands. And, and we're here to, you know, to be brought along with it. Will, will come back into play if and, if and when the conceptual PRRD becomes real. But at this point, it's your secret for us to, us to be explained to.
Okay, well, that being said, that's why we, we actually came here today was to keep you guys up in information that we were provided. And to bring forth any questions you might have to the, to the applicant at the same time, so. Well, I think at this point, we have our job to do and we'll go on further with our evaluation of seeker in our next meetings and we'll, we'll be able to speak to it as a board to what other, if any, comments or concerns we may have. And we'll discuss the part two of the EAF and, and proceed forward.
Scott, will you provide the board with your findings from the part two?
We will, that's going to be public information anyway, so yeah, you'll have that.
And Scott, and Scott, you know, I think keeping everybody abreast, and I can keep them abreast too on the town board of, you know, the meetings and when we're, you know, when all this stuff is going, transpiring, so that everyone is kind of in the loop. I think it's important that the town board, you know, kind of turn on their computer and watch the meeting because it keeps you informed on, on what's going on in the process. It might help some of the questions that they have, right?
I agree. I don't see them on the, on the, the, I'm going to say the agenda for the next workshop meeting that we have, so we'll talk to Dave and see where we're going to put this forth, what meeting it'll be that we do the evaluation. So that'll be for Dave, Paul and myself, so, and, and we'll go further from there. But yes, I agree, we do have an agenda out all the time, Claire, as you know.
I know.
So you do have that. We've ironed out a lot of issues with the planning board, trying to make sure that everyone gets the information since the Zoom meetings that we have, it's very difficult, so. But we're doing the best we can, as the town board does also. So with that, I think that.
I got one thing. Kelly, can you send me the PowerPoint you did?
Yes, I will send it over to you. It's a.
If the, if the board's amenable to this, I think it'd be fun to put that on the website.
I think that's a great idea.
So Kelly, if you do that for me, I'll put it on there. We have a link just for your project. I'll put it under there. And then any of the board members can review it at their leisure, as can the public.
Very well, we'll get it to you.
And maybe lastly, Scott, to follow up with Claire, it probably will behoove us going forward to stay on on to and up to speed when you guys are running your meetings.
Dave, Dave, just a quick question. Reputing this on the website when they haven't even done their discussion, shouldn't we wait? Why don't you just get the PowerPoint from Kelly? I, I hope it's Kelly. Send it to all of us so we can review it, and then we'll make a decision if we want to put it on the website or not after we get the full assessment form done by the planning board. Because why put something up there that may not be correct and get the people in a frenzy?
Well, I'm sorry, why not, why, why put the applicant's presentation up on the website?
I, I, I think you should send it to us first. We can review it again in our leisure. They, we'll wait for the full environmental assessment form part two done by our planning board. And then if they find no significant impact, then, then the board can decide to put it on the website. But if it's, if we find that there's an impact and that things have to be adjustments and revisions have to be made, why put a PowerPoint up of something that, you know, like we refer to as the worst-case scenario? That our townspeople are in a uproar of something that may not even come to fruition.
I can't support that at all. I'm, I'm just.
I'm going to weigh in on that.
I'm going to sign off.
I'm going to weigh in. Joe, I just think that, I think that putting it up lets everyone, you know, see it, so we're, you know, transparent about it. I just, yes, of course, there are going to be changes and there's going to be things that are going to, you know, change and whatever, but I think it's important if we put it up, at least, you know, people, you know, even our friends, Joe, right, can have a look at it and, and offer their thoughts, you know, it, it might help with the future planning of this.
Claire, if you don't mind, I too believe that it's just a matter of transparency and what it is we're dealing with at this point. You're right, Joe, it's not the end-all be-all, but I do think that it's public information at this stage of the game. And everybody should have the chance to review what it is we're looking at, so.
Then can we mark it at least, implement a draft across it or something so people don't real, think it's, they, this is actually the plan that's going forward?
Well, it, it actually could be the plan that's going forward. It's based on you guys when the time of the application comes before you. So right now, it is.
I think we should review it at our meeting. I, it does seem to be a seeker review, and people might think it was done by the town when it's actually done by a private company. I mean, they can put it on their website, they can advertise it if they like. But for us to put it on, it might confuse people, and they will think that it's our analysis, which we haven't even done yet.
And that's what I'm saying, Sal, and it's not about being transparent. It's about putting up false information, and, and I don't want to do that.
So, so I just want to ask one thing of those of you who don't think it should go up, which is surreal to me, since we've done such a great job putting things up. Should I take the applicant's maps and submissions down as well?
No.
No, I don't think so.
Well, wait, wait, but the PowerPoint was presented by the applicant as their version of what the information was.
I'm afraid, my, my concern is that a person going to the town website may think that is a seeker review, which can only be done by the town planning board. The application is what it is.
I, I, if I could say one thing, this whole thing, right now at this stage of the game, although there's an application for the ALF and there isn't one for the PRRD, everything is kind of up in the air. We haven't voted on anything to pass, so the whole thing is really up in the air at this stage.
If it's up in the air, why put it on the website?
Because Joe, it lets everybody have a opinion.
For, for all clarity, I believe it's what's being presented to the town, and, and that's what we do in every case. We show these are the items that are coming forth before the planning board in order to have conversation, in order for people to understand it. And Joe, for you, it's always about the town, and we want the town to know that we are as transparent as we can be, letting them get the information that they need. So, you know, it's for the town, is what I'm saying.
And also, I'm going to say that if, if it's up there, then that might drive people south to the meetings so that they can now offer their opinions when there's, you know.
When the time comes.
When it, yeah, when people ask a que, they'll come to the meetings and maybe ask a question south, and that will guide us in a better position to go forward, don't you think? I, I don't think that putting it on.
The same maps are already on there. The only thing that's not there is the presentation.
Listen, I'm going to tell you something. When I saw the first presentation or when I got the paperwork, you know, it kind of, you know, it made me look at everything, and then I, I decided whether I liked to see the project go forward or not. So I think that if you put it up there, you know, let people come to the planning board, which I always encourage so that they can let us know what they're feeling.
Again, Carl, you had a question. You're muted, Carl.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, I, 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 you know, I, I agree with Joe saying, and I agree with David saying. I think what we're looking at is a conceptual plan. And it, it's, it's what it really is right now, a concept. So it can be put on the website as a conceptual plan, not necessarily reviewing the plan as being a site plan. So that may, you know, a lot of people may not understand what that means. Our people on the board may not understand that, but we've looked at conceptual site plans. So therefore, it's really just a concept. And I think that, I think the public can handle that. It'll probably wind up being in the local paper anyway, if Mark is the president. So.
Carl. To your point, to your point, we've seen hotels that aren't really even applied for anything else on the newspaper, and these are things that are presented to the public. So there's, I'm all for a matter of transparency and letting people see what's there.
Scott, you and I had talked about conceptual plans in the past, you know? I know how you feel about it, and I know how I, you know, how much I.
They're, they're coming before us. People will ask questions, and it's great that we would have them be open to the idea of what's out there, know what it is we're dealing with. I, that's, as a planning board, we could discuss it before it goes out, maybe on Thursday or whatever the case is, but I don't see any issue as far as this going forward. And I believe our attorney would advise us whether or not we are correct or able to do so without having any unclarity going on.
Yeah, exactly. Brad, if I may, what, my, my office gets the bulk of these questions. I don't have a problem explaining to them that A, it's conceptual, and B, they should tune in and get their input to the planning board.
Perfect, I'm in there.
Agreed, and let's face it, we are a small town, and there's, you know, everybody's related to everybody, and if, if they're not related, you know, we've been here, me, I'm not related to any, anybody in town, but you know, you know so many people, they're going to call you and ask you, and you have that one-on-one opportunity to just tell them it's a conceptual. This was a secret review.
Scott?
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Agreed, one.
Franco.
I have no idea what this is.
Now, listen, I think what we could do, this, Mike McCormick, Kelly, Andy Willingham, if you do want to put the plans down, I think they can stamp across the plans conceptual. So this way, it, it's understood that way, that it's not set in stone. I mean, you can do that.
And, and that's what I'm saying.
I've seen that before.
I think the plans are already, we've already indicated what portions are conceptual. Obviously. Yeah. So I think.
So can we stamp the PRRD plan conceptual at this point?
I think the title says, I think the title says conceptual. So, and the ALF is not conceptual, that's what we have specific information on, so, you know, we can't just stamp every plan. But we could double-check the plans to see if the PRD is, is, is conceptual. You know, if I may, I mean, perhaps if you want us with the, with the secret documentation that we submitted, if, if you want to have the part two and the part three, say, draft, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, part one is the obligation of the applicant to fill out, which we've done. And your consultants have had it for a while, so we haven't gotten any feedback on that. But in any event, yes, part two and part three is ultimately up to the planning board. And we presented our position, our reasoning for the hard look, and our reasoning for the negative declaration. So if you want to, if you want to have us stamp those draft, I don't have a problem with that. I think the information should be up on the website. I think there's a lot of misinformation out there. There's a lot of people spreading a lot of incorrect information, so I'd rather have it out there and up on the website. The more information the public can get firsthand, as opposed to getting it secondhand and incorrectly from somebody else, the better. So, you know, we're all for the open transparency and comments. We've been that way from the get-go on this application. We've been before the town on and off for, for eighteen months at least. So, you know, we have no problem stamping whatever you need stamped, but just so you know, the ALF is not conceptual, but the PRRD is.
Yeah.
I'm good with that, John, thank you.
Yeah.
Dave, we put it on the website. I, I like the idea. No, I'm not against transparency, and Scott, you have to understand it's printed in the paper, we have no control over, but we do have control of putting factual, correct information on our website. And, and that's what I want to make sure of. So I, I like the idea of stamping what is conceptual and what's not, John. That's fine. Can we conclude, Dave, a link to a Google sheet that allows questions, so you can compile questions from people as they review the plan? Um, can we conclude, Dave, a link to a Google sheet that um allows questions, so you can compile questions from people as they review the plan? So you can click on a link and get quite and ask questions. So townspeople that go to this conceptual plan or real plan, whatever part they're looking at, they can click on a link and then type their questions in for us to answer at a later date. I think that'd be really powerful. So.
But let me ask you this, Joe. Wouldn't it make more sense for them just to um sign on to the planning board meetings and ask their questions at a privilege of the floor?
I think you should give people every opportunity to ask a question. The whole idea is to get.
Can you imagine the manpower to be a- asking, be answering all these questions? Like, I think.
So that's me.
We have.
I'm I'm that manpower. Not for nothing, but I'm that manpower. I get those emails all the time. There are multiple links throughout the site. Um, Wendy and I are the, for some reason, we are still the webmasters of of the of the website. And I get, um, I was just telling, I think, Andy the day uh today, when we met with Scott. Um, I I, you know, the other day, well over three hundred emails, and probably a tenth of those are from residents. So there is the facility on the site already to ask questions. Uh, but Joe, I am happy to put as many links as you like. Um, I am, I am flabbergasted that we are even having this discussion. Um, because I, it has always been my perspective that we want to be as open and transparent. In fact, uh, Sal had a great idea based on the uh City of Poughkeepsie's uh plan to actually put a bunch of links out. Uh, and I took that idea uh and gave credit to Sal for that idea to start doing that. Uh, I think it's very effective to have the applicants and the and uh and the board and the public have access to every single thing we do all the time. And I am attempting to do that. Um, and and it's.
Oh, you did a great, you did a great job on that. Uh, I really appreciate it. And um, my my concern is specifically, Dave, is that like the EA, if the EAF is there and and it says this is filled out by the lead agency, but it's actually filled out by the applicant. Uh, we're kind of beating a dead horse, but that is what I'm afraid of the public seeing.
So 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 let let me try, let me try to appease that a little bit, Sal, and I hear I hear what you're saying. Um, because uh obviously, it is not filled out by by you guys. Uh, maybe the title clearly indicates um for discussion only, uh, not a town document, something along those lines. Submitted by the applicant and and, you know, that sort of puts it back on them, but still makes it available for you guys and the public access any anytime day or night.
Yeah, I like I like that.
Actually, that's a good idea. And actually, you could just have it in the title, even it would work.
I don't I don't think it could be any clearer than that.
So the link, the link will reflect that it's not a town document. It's a it's a submission by the applicant, by that darn Kelly. Um, and uh, and, you know, and if you want, what I'll do before before I make it public to everybody, uh, I I will take the extra step and circulate the link to you all so you all can approve the title, and I can get sleep at night.
Thank you, Professor.
Okay, is there any other questions, any other issues? Can I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you, everybody, for your time today, and.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Hi, guys.
Bye, everybody.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you.